I'll call Amy to order with your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, this is a workshop meeting, uh, it'll be for discussion and exchanging of ideas and topics that are no decisions, official decisions or official business we will conduct at that at this meeting. Uh, this time I'll rule call council member Thomas.
Here.
Council member Gordon.
Here.
Council member Batson.
Here.
Council member Booth.
Here.
Council member Sharpie.
Here.
All council members are present. Uh, we have the workshop agenda sent out to you. Uh, would be appropriate to move to, uh, to have that approved.
Make motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
And Sharpie, right?
Mm-hmm.
Motion by council member Batson, second.
Council member Sharpie, whoa, I can hear that sound. To approve the workshop agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item four, I will turn it over to city administrator Newsom for the continued review of department CIP requests.
We were going to have a guest speaker to talk about some ideas for saving us some money on our road budget for the CIP, but he was called away, as Matt said, he had an emergency of his own. Did you just wanna briefly talk about what he was gonna share with us?
Yeah. So the city of Hutchinson's been using, it's called Replay, and it's a bio-based product that they get out of soybean oil. And basically, the long-term analogy from the reports that I had sent Amy through John is that they've saved, I think it was right around one hundred and seventy-six thousand on some of their annual street projects within the last three to five years. But what they're seeing, the big difference is on with Replay is the roadway is being pushed out up to that twenty to thirty-year mark. And then the amount of maintenance and preventative maintenance that they're doing with that also has reduced their overall maintenance costs, so. Sums it up, the dollar figure part of it. I spoke briefly with Jerry, I believe, from Bergen, and Bergen has been the main contractor that's been doing the work with that, so.
Kirby, do you wanna come up already?
Sure.
Talk about the stuff you added on right away, too.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts about this Replay?
Well, yeah, uh, that's something that we used back in twenty nineteen on our twenty seventeen projects of Brandon Road.
Mm-hmm.
Concerns I have about that, I guess, starting off is, I know it penetrates down, but the surface to me looked dry and it had a lot of pitting in it. So we rocked it this year. And then, just about every year, I talk again with our city engineer on his thoughts about seal coating and bringing up bargains Replay. And he's, our city engineer does not recommend it.
Okay.
He, in his office, he kind of asks his other engineer cohorts, and they all recommend chip seal is the best option. Uh, the saving money thing, I don't know how Hutch does it, but so far, I mean, back in twenty nineteen, the bid for Replay was a dollar fifty-five square yard. Chip seal was a buck fifty-six, so one cent more.
Yeah.
Chip seal.
Do, uh...
This year I got a bid for it from bargain.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for our new road, 'cause I thought, well, maybe we'll do that on our new asphalt and rock it later. Uh, just to get that protection down farther and then put something on top of it. But, I mean, the chip seal this year was a buck twenty-one a square yard, and the Replay was a dollar fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
So it's coming in more expensive when I get bids for it.
He, uh, 'cause I know in that stuff that I had sent with you, that there was, out of their five-year, six-year, whatever, they had the numbers and all that, and the team, I wanna say it was right about ten to fifteen bucks less per whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But, and of course, you know, the way they had it down is linear footage.
Well, then I, I question, is that stuff gonna seep through, you know, the older streets that are already rocked and have some oil left? I mean, is it gonna seep through all that?
The farthest and the deepest I've seen was go about two and a half inches, but that was...
That's on new asphalt.
That's on new. And on, on the older stuff, I know John had a, uh, they had a synopsis of all that, and then they did the CIP index for like a thirty-year return.
I can send that out to council if you wanna take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I ain't saying that we gotta use it, I just wanna make sure that we...
Well, if it's a price thing, it's just not, so far chip sealing for me has been, but the bids that I give, it's considerably cheaper.
And it's not a decision we have to make before the preliminary levy?
No.
That's something even after we've passed our preliminary levy, we can go back and look at.
I would imagine it fluctuates with the soybean price.
Oh, yeah.
So soy is up, that's going to be it.
All the commodity stuff, you know, as well as what oil and...
Sure.
All that kind of fun stuff, and, and I guess the big thing that struck me was the, the long-term maintenance costs on it. It's not just saving us two bucks or a buck, whatever now, it's in the next thirty-year span where they're seeing, you know, hardened life surface from it.
If the surface looked dry to me and there was plenty of cracks and a lot of pitting after two years, I mean, we'd have to go back over it, in my mind, quite a bit, just to keep up with it.
And, and one thing, I think, uh, John had recommended it to see if you and Amy or someone could come up and take a look at their project streets. And I think there was a couple that were done down in Mankato also. So that way we're not looking at just one, but more than one.
Now, Kirby, you said you did use it on the seventeen project?
Yeah.
So then have you gone back to the seventeen project and put something else on?
We chipped it this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
Good enough.
Okay.
I said, we don't need to make a decision before the preliminary levy, so we can, we can wait on that. Kirby, also, in front of you, there was a handout from Kirby, um, some other things for the CIP. We're specifically talking about capital improvement by them right now. So Kirby, did you wanna go over, text with Vermeer is on the top for them?
Yeah, we could cash, I accidentally sent that to you.
Oh.
I got different plans with our current one.
So forget this?
Forget that.
Talking my language.
Forget this one.
I used to, did you get any of the, I know it was last minute, Amy, did you get any of my stuff I sent your on like four o'clock today?
What did you send me at four o'clock?
Well, I accidentally sent the Vermeer chipper. What I meant to send was the snow blade for the loader.
The last thing I got was Midwest play shapes, so we ended up with a playground.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, Craig, you would be good for this too, uh, blade out there. Uh, machine help, I wanna, sorry about that, but...
Is that the chipper information?
Ooh, Snow Wolf.
Nope, so that's, that's a, I've been looking at a blade for loader, snow blade. That, in my mind, using it downtown especially and in some parking lots would cut our snow, my snow remover move time in half and the loader is compared to trying to...
Phil, can you maybe make copies of that real quick?
Yes.
Trying to scoop all that.
So we can all see it.
With a little bucket, but it's, the quote I have is state pricing right now for this particular ten-foot blade, twenty thousand dollars.
How much is that for?
You know, I'm not, if it would happen next year, this year, or the year after, I guess, whatever, but it's, in my mind, a good idea.
Does it have the hydraulic end caps on it?
Yeah, yep.
So...
And so we could, you know, use it to...
Twenty thousand dollars added into Kirby's budget. CIP budget one here.
And if it wouldn't work this year, that's fine, I just thought I'd bring the idea to the table, something that I would like to pursue.
And that's a box scraper you go with to pay loader?
Yeah, yep. Looked pretty handy, the guy stopped down to the shop and introduced it to me. So I said, okay, send me a book, so.
So what, what are the features of it that cause it to...
That makes zero.
It's a, it's an attachment you get for the front of loader, essentially a big blade, maybe this...
It's like a million dollars. There we go.
This tall, this table, ten feet wide, I think it was.
Okay. Yeah.
And then it's got wings on the end of it that you can turn in, kinda helps you scoop.
Okay.
Kinda pushes things up into a pile, you can back drag with it. Right now, when I'm downtown, I'm pushing things with the bucket, and I mean, it's just very tedious. This one, and I've heard, like, Gaylord has something like that, he said it's really helped him a lot.
Okay.
Become pretty popular, but...
Is that one...
That's what they use, like, in all, for all the big logistic distribution centers that a lot of...
Does this one articulate at all?
In the yard, that's what they use.
Does it articulate this one?
So you can deal with. I mean, it would probably really be useful for us. Got a lot of time.
Snow Wolf. Okay.
So, realize it's late for the party and, um, if it doesn't work for next year, or if we wanna put a little away, however...
Thoughts?
Wouldn't have to be this specific brand, I could pursue other, maybe you had ideas, Craig, but...
No, there's, the thing about Snow Wolves is they're pretty local, and I've had a lot of extensive use with them, and they're pretty good with parts.
Are they?
And if you need something, they'll get right after it.
Okay.
Where some of these other ones, where they go with government contract, they make a special bolt and special nut, and then you have to buy the special bolt and nut with them. Where with Snow Wolf, they're pretty generic.
Okay.
Well, maybe it could be split in...
We could split it over three years?
Put it in... Two years or three years?
Two years, three years, how soon do you need it, Kirby?
Well, I mean, we'll get, we can get by working now, but I think, way down the road, it would...
We could split it over a few years. How does council feel about that?
If you wanted to compare, Dagelman has a blade like that, would be, that'd be my second go-for-it type of deal.
What'd you say there?
Dagelman?
Dagelman?
Mm-hmm. D-E-G-E-L-M-A-N-N.
Okay.
Is anyone greatly opposed to this?
Saves time and makes things easier.
Yeah, I was gonna say it, it sounds...
Makes sense, if it's structured in a couple of years down the road, or...
Mm-hmm.
The, the salt truck painting, I think there was...
There was...
What year was that truck?
It's a two, two thousand eight, so it's getting up there too already.
So we have that plan for next year, you'll see ten thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
I know I had forward to use some information, it's for Craig.
Yeah, no, it, it just caught my attention, 'cause with the years, with what I've been doing, we've never done it. If it's something that you do, that's part of built into your budget, like, go for it. Just as long as in two years we don't replace it, 'cause a rusty snowplow truck is a rusty snowplow truck.
Right. Well, yeah, it's...
They're barely really scrapped away, it is.
And when, okay, timeout, that was for next year?
Yeah.
The plan for next year?
Oh, that's ten thousand seven hundred, so you've got nineteen thousand you're looking for for a snowplow. So, you know, the dilemma is, is where you, where you stick the money, you know?
Is it, is it...
Well...
I don't think we did a whole lot of salt in last year.
No, not too much.
Well...
Like you said, it's...
The amount of salt doesn't matter, it's once you get it, it's...
It's on its way already.
Yeah.
I mean, you go from stage one cancer to stage...
Oh, no, but you're gonna sandblast it, which is gonna take more off, and then you're gonna coat it, and then hope that that lasts for a little...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once you get into that part of it, I mean, snowplow trucks right now, for the last single axle that we got rid of on Minbit, barely brought fifteen thousand. So, I mean, just whichever way we...
And I suppose, is that something you buy new and you don't wanna buy a used?
I would not recommend buying a used plow truck. Usually when they go down the road, they're, because they've hit their, their life expectancy generally is fourteen years, fifteen years if you push it. I mean, with Mindot in our metro district, we're running trucks from nineteen ninety-one, but that's because we have a dollar thirty-five into them. You know, we can replace that stuff and turn it over, because it's like bumper cars down there. I mean, they run them as long as they possibly can, and then when they're structurally not fit. Basically, when we can't DOT them in the metro area, we get rid of them.
Okay.
But the rest of the state, like District Eight and District Seven, fourteen years and they're out.
Yeah, I mean, it's a guessing game, but I, I would think this one can last yet, um, for a while. I'd rather budget for one down the road, I guess, a new truck.
So instead of painting?
Yeah.
You'd rather see council budget for...
I got that bid, man, that might have been two years ago already for that, to get, to get it...
How much, how much was it, do you remember?
Ten thousand seven hundred.
No, for that new truck.
Oh, oh, I don't know about that, I just mean the, the sandblast and the coating.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I think we got it last year, 'cause we brought it up last year and it ended up on the twenty twenty-two.
That might have been twenty nineteen. It was, yeah, for sure, right, last year, too.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And when was the last time it was done, or has it never been done since oh eight? It never has been done?
No.
Is it the box that's mainly?
Ah, yeah, that liner in the box is, is busted up, so like, the box is rusting underneath that.
Bubled. Yeah.
I mean, it's all the, everything underneath is getting bad.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not gonna take the liner out, and most they do is just tip it up, and they're not gonna get the inside.
Yeah, usually once, if you take the liner, and from my, every time I've done it...
You find the holes?
You take the, you take the liner out and your box is shot, I mean, 'cause by the time you start peening and sandblasting, you're down to a paper-thin material. Would you, would you be willing to come down and take a look at it sometime? I can definitely come take a look at it.
Before we...
Yeah, yeah.
Before we finalize our CIP?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to point out that Kirby did lose his concrete apron, we took that out of the budget, we kinda decided that was gonna go.
Okay, so, sure, we'll wait on, on the salt truck thing for now?
So I can take the salt truck out, is it gonna be in agreement with that?
Is there any, I suppose there's not, is there any leftover from this year that's not been spent, we can just buy it out of this year's?
Mm, the money that's for, for this year was designated to the different things already, whatever.
Budgeted... I mean, like, so say we budgeted for something, and we haven't spent it.
Kirby, was there anything to not...
For public works?
Yeah. Buy?
I was just, realized I gotta get going on bids for it, but the, the dry air system a little bit...
That comes out of the community center, not the...
Oh, that's community center, yeah.
Not the public works.
Okay, no, there's nothing I can get anymore.
There's nothing that he, yeah, I didn't think so, um...
Nope.
Speaking of the community center, then, the next thing in your packet is the painting, we talked about painting the light poles and painting up this building.
Yeah, so I, I guess I reached out and just got it done, maybe it's more in Phil's ballpark, but you were CC'd on this. The, this community center, the outside painting, all of the light poles, if you look at them, are getting, uh, pretty rusty. One of the bids is inside, yeah.
Oh, I thought you included the inside as well. How was it, is strictly inside?
Uh, the inside was a separate one. So, that's in front of you, I guess you guys can see what it all kinda tails. And what you can steal, metals around the windows, some flashings, uh, the bullards, light poles.
Do they do recaucking then also? Like around the windows where metal meets masonry or anything that's opened up, I noticed there were some areas that...
Uh, sure, I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
What's the difference between these two, Kirby, the first one's for the twelve thousand and the second one's for the eighteen?
First one... Yeah, the eighteen is for inside.
Eighteen is just the inside.
We thought we'd just throw that in there to get an idea.
So we had budgeted twenty thousand dollars, remember, the community center improvements? And then twenty-one-five for the LED light upgrade, unless we wanna...
Oh, for the parking lots? Or in, inside here too, right?
The whole works.
The whole works.
So...
Well, and, yeah, I included the concrete pads on the south side here too, like the rock concrete, we call that.
Mm-hmm.
For him to put some sealer on it.
We have to put that under twenty twenty-three right now.
Yeah, so for, for outside, we're looking at, I mean, with this, well, twelve thousand six hundred. The inside was eighteen thousand six hundred.
Uh, she wanna split that up and do outside next year, inside next year?
Yeah, I mean, however you guys, my mind for sure outside needs to be done within the next two years, I would think.
I know, we talked about outside sooner.
It's starting to look pretty shabby, um... I mean, seems like inside it's gotta be done every, last time it was painted was twenty fourteen, I believe.
Fourteen, mm-hmm.
And on, over, or seven years down the road, and it's starting to get pretty dirty, yeah.
What are your thoughts on that?
I kinda like the splitting it up.
Splitting it makes sense.
Yeah.
I do too.
Outside first, then inside?
When I said it, mm-hmm. So that would add twelve thousand to next year's?
Community center.
Mm-hmm.
In addition, oh, no, okay, next year's, it's empty right now.
Right. 'Cause we don't have anything budgeted.
Yeah.
Are you gonna change it like a wire or not?
You want me to change it now?
Will you let more of the lighting down until twenty twenty-four? Well, I think you'll also undo the lighting, undo the poles, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So lighting next year?
They're painting, I've been taking them down, but it's gonna, kinda coordinated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably in the same area, coordinating.
So the LED lighting was for outside and inside?
Yeah, all the outside, no, no, it was the whole building, inside.
Mm-hmm.
Like the outs, the outside is the biggest consumer though.
Sure. Yeah, I think, do you remember, will it be more expensive to do the outside than the inside? To budget, is it not necessarily a fifty-fifty?
No, 'cause I think that it may even include the, uh, I don't know, maybe the ambulance room, this area, and the original cloak that you had.
Yeah, it was, it was for, for, well, point one five for the community center.
Is there any rebates available for that?
Yeah, there is, um...
That's why I thought there should be.
I think last we discussed it, but maybe Lisa was gonna check into that, or is that included? I just didn't remember. So, the twenty twenty rebate would have been two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
The balance for the whole thing?
I would have, yeah, then if we... Yeah, twenty twenty.
Most, most likely. The, the biggest consumer for the lighting is outside, 'cause we've got people that are turning lights on. We shut lights off in living rooms, the bathroom lights off right now.
Yeah, we generally...
You got big lights outside that are on, trying to brighten up the parking lot and the outside of the building.
Shut all the lights off. We generally shut all the lights off in here during midday.
So your return on your investment is gonna be...
Outside.
Be outside, not in here. Even though these are probably sixty watts apiece, but, no.
This says, if, you know, for the whole thing, the payback, according to what he broke down for us, was just under four and a half years, if you do the whole building.
That's pretty good. But I think, again, that, that, when he looked at the hours, the biggest, the biggest...
Yeah, I mean, outside is more.
The outside, it, it's probably more like two years from the exterior.
Kirby, can we split up that LED upgrades over two years, or do we have to do them all at the same time, or...
I would think, we could do it at different times.
Can they do outside and inside?
I would think so, I mean, 'cause we were, we had talked about doing the different buildings at different times. Just community center next year.
Okay, so we could plan for that one next year and not inside the following year.
Yeah, probably.
Mm-hmm. That's the way you've got it right now.
That's the way it is right now, we're just guessing at the fifty-fifty, whatever.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Anybody have thoughts, don't like the idea? We'll have to maintain our building.
Actually, I, we've had a lot of problems with our outside lights the last few years, just bulbs not lasting, and... I, I'd have to have Newsom here explain it, but he, there's things just ballast that are...
What are those, are those...
I don't know, things aren't working right.
Are those solar lights, solar lights out there now, or whatever?
Uh, they're metal, metal halide right now, but...
Yeah. It better out.
I don't know, it seems like they're, they're twenty years old now, or there's just problems.
I think, yeah, both of them, you gotta do the outside.
Yeah, yeah, so this one, they turn out the guts and everything in them, and...
Okay.
We, yeah, I would also ask him, since we're taking the poles down and stuff to paint them and stuff, is that gonna save us some money on that price as well?
Okay.
Well, the painting part, that's part of the poles, isn't it? Are they finally gonna take them down, or what? Painting the poles?
I'd have to ask, I don't, I think he was just gonna paint them, I'd have to ask.
Okay.
I know we talked about it, I don't remember, but, uh, it's two separate deals, like the light, the lights and the painting.
Yeah, I, I know, but I'm saying, if we did it at the same time, would there be any savings?
Because they wouldn't have to go up.
Yeah, that's what I mean, for taking it down, that's what I was asking.
Right. Could be savings on both parts of it.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, on one side or the other, one of them would maybe, would take on a bigger load.
Okay, can I keep us moving along? The Parks Committee was to make a recommendation on resurfacing of those basketball courts and playground equipment. I was not at the Parks Committee meeting, but Kirby or...
I was there. I was there.
Didn't make it either.
I was there.
Whoever was there, if you wanna give us a little update on what their recommendation was?
Well, we're kinda in the midst of seeking out some options, 'cause they talk about pickleball, pickleball court. But also keeping a basketball court, so I'm supposed to figure out if you can take the post out for pickleball and be able to, if there's ever a basketball tournament or something.
And we... I guess it's not known too, what's under there, in other words, I think the sentiment was it was two or three inches of blacktop over four inches of concrete. The old concrete is there.
Ooh.
So if that's the case, it all needs to be ripped out and start over, I mean, you just can't put another layer of blacktop on top, it just keeps getting, but...
Would they be happy with a sand volleyball pit?
Which, which is there already, I mean, there is sand volleyball there already.
Well, it's rock volleyball, not sand.
Rock.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is P-Rock, isn't it? Close enough.
Tell you the name.
Um...
Ow.
Yeah.
So there really was no determination made on what, it, it was, I think you were supposed to look in to try to find out what was underneath.
Yeah.
So we can get a good handle on what the cost would be then.
Yeah, we were gonna be able to remove it beforehand and have them, you know, put pavement down.
I think more time was spent in discussing the playground equipment and the fact that that is, I mean, there's some broken right now, can't get parts for it. And the, and the cause, or the need for dollars to replace all of that, and some of it now and some in years to come.
And there's some information in this packet of Kirby's add-ons too, that he has quotes for replacing those slides. So we wanna focus on just replacing the slide, what was the total for the parks? Do we have an updated number on that, Kirby?
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, there's no updated number.
I don't see the total.
That, yeah, I, it was on an email, I did realize it wasn't on the pack, shit.
I mean, it's got the bill of materials.
But no number.
There's like a fourteen...
Well, that's for the slides.
Did you get the email by chance, Amy, that I...
I didn't get any of it.
Well, we got the.
All the pricing she broke down will be on email, I had forwarded Amy to be attached.
Yeah.
Are you able to get the part for the one that's broken now?
Can't get the parts, so the bid is, one of them it's.
Yeah.
Two slides eighty-nine hundred seventy-two and a slither slide six thousand. They make a lot of stainless steel?
I've got it.
Old ones still seem to be around everywhere. Cause yeah, the enclosed ones are just getting tore up, two years in a row.
Costs twice as much.
And it's expensive, could we put in another, just others?
Ladder. Fireman's. Well, you have the option.
Big rocks.
We'd have the option to close off, I mean, just get it, like one of the gate things and close it off. Uh, or those little fence sections. Or put the tunnel slide back up and close off the other one or vice versa. Or replace them both for fourteen thousand four hundred.
We have to do something with those slides.
Yeah.
Whether we decide to budget for a whole new, start budgeting for the parks, we have to, we'll do something. I mean, that would be cheaper for us next year to budget to replace these slides at least.
Uh.
Than what we currently have in there.
Well, once you're starting to stick fifteen thousand dollars in, that's fifteen thousand, that could have went towards a new.
Towards a new one.
A new playground, which is gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars if we do something same or similar.
What do we do with the broken slides if we have to budget for a whole new playground?
Well, exactly. So. I don't know, I mean.
How far, how far out, uh, you know, would the playground be, I guess? The playground came in at a hundred and forty-two thousand.
That was just for Four Seasons?
For Four Seasons.
Hundred and.
I told her to leave the swing set out of it, cause to me that looked really solid yet. I don't know, depending on how long the weight. There's no plastic on it, I mean, it's all metal steel, yeah, except plastic that wears so bad, and then you got rubber coating on the decks up in the air and that's all cracked and. Starting to rust out in spots.
So are we thinking about doing the same company, same kind of equipment, same kind of material?
We wouldn't have to.
Well, I would say if it's not even lasting twenty-five years.
Well, the recommendation is you should, that I get from these playground companies is twenty-five, thirty years, you shouldn't plan in place.
Mm-hmm.
Parts, just because the weather is so tough on them.
Well, it's hard and fifty pound kids that are jumping on top of the.
That too.
The enclosed one, that's the issue.
Yeah, you get some of that.
That's why I was asking about stainless steel.
What? If you take away.
We've had several slides just crack though in the past couple of years too, just break up.
Take away the enclosed one, no, the kids are jumping on there.
Weather.
Take away the enclosed one.
Mm-hmm.
The other one is, is kinda, I don't know if the sun, they, cause they've got like, I don't know if you call them speed pumps in them, but it's broken right at the speed pump.
Yeah.
Oh, so basically it just, yeah, it kinda has like a little whoopie in it and it, and it just cracked right there on top of that and that's probably UV.
Saw that. Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm sure the, you know, UV is affecting the other one too, but.
Is that the slither?
The slithery one, yeah.
The slither one.
So, so I know like, what, three years ago, everybody started going to like playscapes and started doing the powder coated steel and the plastic and stuff. Instead of going back to wood structures, which probably would be maybe a little bit more maintenance on us. But would last probably a lot longer. I mean, I think like the place that's done in St. Peter, they have a huge wooden structure, play structure. And maybe with something like that, we can replace a board here or there or something, sections at a time or whatever ourselves too, instead of.
That was that one at Jock at the beginning, it was all wood. I mean, we don't know what they're spending on them and for real.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's expensive to purchase it, to be good with it and whatever too, but thinking in the long run, if you take care of it, it should last a very long time. I mean, you buy a commercial grade stuff or whatever too, right, it's not like, way to put in your backyard. Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what was all, what replacements were done before I got here, but one, two, three, I think we're up to four, well, five, six, with these next two, that's six.
You know, I mean, the kind of.
Items that I've replaced, seven, we got one more thing that broke at Frenzel, one of those little pad things on a spring, um. That we just found. Uh, and that's all happened within the last six years. So.
What's the thousand dollar discount on here?
We have to put a yard sign out with their advertising on it.
Yeah. If we only replace one slide, could we lose this or what?
Probably. It's probably worth seven or something, I think.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I'm just curious what.
Yes, I'm not sure, I'd have talked to her.
How we got that discount? Maybe look into some wood, would council like him to look into some wood playgrounds?
Not sure.
I would, I would look into just different varieties, you know, instead of just picking along, you know, we definitely gotta get more goods and see what's out there.
I have, yeah, I got Saint Croix Recreation coming at the end of the week, this week, they offer some different things, you know.
Yeah.
So I can.
See what kinda options are out there.
What would fit in that playground and the cost and all that.
Yeah.
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 And even looking at wood is an option, I mean, might as well not rule it out unless we know the.
Okay. Yeah.
No.
More options on it.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, if it's redwood or cedar, it shows.
Cause we could go park by park.
Five inch solid, weld tight, welded.
Which is the worst park, is it Four Seasons?
Yeah, and that's, that's our oldest one, and then I think Frenzel was next, and that's our second oldest one.
That we need to focus on first.
Yeah.
Both played structures too.
Yeah, they're the most used by far.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we need to focus on our Four Seasons, but right now a hundred and forty-four thousand just to do four.
Hundred forty-two, yeah.
Hundred forty-two thousand just to do Four Seasons, all of it, otherwise slides, fourteen thousand for two of them.
Yeah. Right. And I have that quote here if you guys wanna make a decision tonight.
To replace a slide.
Yeah.
Did you hear back about that one part, we went to Four Seasons and that, that crack in the one slide?
Yeah, they don't, they didn't.
They, you can't get it.
They're obsolete.
Cause she was, she was checking on it, I think you said.
Yeah. Right, no care.
Good. Hmm.
Tells me that they don't make those molds anymore and they don't have any parts, so I suppose eventually they move on from what they offer to something new.
Yeah.
Is this that slither slide?
That, yeah.
I would say that.
Well, both, both of the slides.
I would say that round tube slide, I would see put the fence up in there, cause I mean, that pretty much goes straight down, what else are you gonna put there? Unless you put a fireman's pole there or something like that.
I asked her about that, she's like, the only attachment it's built for.
It is. The slide.
Yeah, where it attaches, it's going to slide.
Well, or a fence to put in there.
Even offensive, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other one, I could see replacing that since it does whatever, and that is probably the tallest, I mean, that would be your tallest slide there. I mean, we're talk, we're still talking six thousand dollars.
Unless they take our discount to.
No, I mean, after tax and everything like that, that's six thousand dollars.
That's. That's before the discount.
But I mean, I could see doing that, so at least there's something there for a big slide. And then after you buy the tax, it probably will be six thousand dollars.
They're gonna stick it to you, whichever way you go.
Correct.
Well, great. I mean, I need to stick money into it thinking, uh.
Well, I, I don't, I, I think you can get five years out of it, if you just put a slide in and you start planning for replacements.
Right.
Kind of just think about a little bit to the council agenda under Kirby's report to make a decision, so he can keep going on this.
Sure.
Slides. Kirby, remember, we'll bring this up under your report.
Let's see, is there anything else I had here?
Anything else for me?
Was there something from a auger that we had talked about for, what was it, five or six grand?
Yeah, so I was talking to through the peeps, you know, when I brought it to them. Um, I thought it might be a way to modify it.
Bottom auger, personal lower.
Yeah, um. Anyways, peeps, peeps was gonna try to do some modification with some welding trucks.
So is that something?
To, to make it last a little longer.
Something we could move out?
I, it sounds like we can, yeah.
How many years? Looking at that.
Well, I would say twenty.
Is it on the, is it on the, for biting or what, what's?
What year, Kirby?
It's wearing down real bad, it's, it's got some bends and spots. So it's got a slight lobble to it, but he thought he could fix all that.
Twenty-four, twenty-five?
I could, yeah, I mean, if you wanna push it out that far and then quit down and revisit it.
Twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
You know, easy.
So we can take that off of twenty twenty-two, at least for next year's, alright, thank you.
No. That makes me smile.
Hope it works, but I mean, we'd probably get through next year anyways.
Okay, so twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Alright.
That was it for Kirby.
Yeah.
Should be, okay.
Thank you, Kirby.
Thank you.
Jamie, do you wanna come talk about the ambulance?
Hello.
She'll present what's ever on her pad there.
Right. We all learned the ABCs today. Come on up.
Bring a chair.
Are you okay? They can talk about ambulance. So you can hang out here.
Bye.
Evening.
Good evening, Jamie.
So is my fan club? Support. Right, right. There were some quotes in your packet, Jamie just got some of them right before, some information from you that she handed out to everyone.
Yeah, the ones that were sitting in front of you here, um, I did find out that Afterburner had some service logs on both of our trucks, so I obtained those from them. And then the second part here is from North Central, it's kind of a, kind of a down and dirty kind of quote. He was trying to send the attachments and they were not coming through on email, so, um, the CCL one fifty is going to be the information that I gave with you. With this, and then the Demir's is pretty much a sister truck to the original, the Demir's that we currently have in service right now, so it'd be almost an identical twin. For reference, speaking. Um, both dealers that I spoke to, the one up in Virginia and then, um, Fred here in Lester Prairie, said that the turnaround time on these trucks is, is pretty much at minimum a year. It all depends on what chassis you choose, and then also if they can obtain the chassis. And so they've been seeing, both said about three hundred sixty-five days a year kind of thing, and he said, even though that COVID did push some of the manufacturing stuff out. Some of it hasn't been, been up to par yet, so it is, it's a substantially long time to wait for a truck. And then, uh, Jamie had included some more information, um, in regards to some quotes from Premier Specialty Vehicles, they are of Norn. They're, I kinda tried to, uh, stick with the same style as we currently have for the Demir's, just for reference. Um, but the, the notation on the CCL, that was actually kind of, kind of attractive too, as far as, uh, cost-wise. But it actually, their box on the CCL here is about two feet shorter than the actual Demir's, and you still have a lot of room in it. Um, but they, both dealers said at any point in time, if they wanted us to, uh, take away a couple demos, they'd be willing to bring down demo trucks and so on and so forth for them, but.
I think we did that last time.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, I like the little deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just wood for thought, you know.
You know, they're asking on this one about transferring the power load from your vehicle if you'd want a new one?
Yeah, no, we would use the existing one that we have, um, they're.
But now we don't have to budget for that.
Yeah, they're relatively new and they're in good working condition, um, they, they are part of the servicing that goes on up in Lester Prairie as well, so. They, they're pretty well taken care of, yeah, we would really like to bring those over to the new truck.
Whatever we decide to do, we do need to let the townships know because we had told them ten years, so. I don't wanna just throw it on a meter and say, you know, okay, you owe us your percentage next year.
No, 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 no.
Right.
No, next year has been budgeted already, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Yeah.
But yeah, I did try to include a couple of different scenarios, whether it's a remount or a new truck, um, all that, all that jazz. But you can kinda have a figure as far as dollar amount, so what would be considered affordable and which is completely.
They don't say how much you have to put down on, when you place the order, is it thirty percent or?
No, and just because the, the nature of the questions that I had asked both dealers, they didn't, we really didn't discuss that, I just wanted.
It would be nice if we could have the trucks down here and invite the townships to look at them as well, to be really open with them and say, here's what we're looking at, here's the cost.
That's, that'd be a good. That'd be a good.
It's less than we initially anticipated, we were budgeting four hundred thousand dollars, so their portion was much higher.
But sooner than we anticipated, which is, yeah, I think, hands on.
But. We still need to give them a few.
Hands on for them would be important.
We still need to give them a few years, I think, to make sure that they can budget as well.
Yeah.
So Jamie, there's, you have the three fifties right now, correct?
Are you looking at the North Central hole?
Well, I was just looking, they have it listed here for an E three fifty.
Yeah.
And then in this next one here, it, it says there's an E four fifty.
Yeah.
Do, which one do you prefer, or which one do you vote yay on?
Anything but the diesel one that we have right now. So, I, I would be tickled pink with anything, so.
Are these, so when you go to the four fifty, that's gonna be a diesel six, seven regardless?
Right, I, I would stick to gas, um, just because the fact that in, in some of the information that you have here, um, it would be the service logs for.
Okay.
From North Central, they actually indicated what it costs the city, um, how many cents per mile just to have the truck rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the, uh, two thousand seven, the Ford, yeah, the Ford, E four fifty, that is approximately twenty-nine cents a mile per driven versus the gas, which was.
Tommy's.
Eleven cents.
Yeah.
There's a considerable difference. I, I guess I would just prefer gas.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, I would.
It, so. With that four fifty, that we'd have to go with the diesel.
Right.
So.
And that's.
Is there a particular reason why they went with the bigger chassis size?
I think just because that would be pretty comparable as far as what was going on with that particular Demir's, so.
Okay. Yeah.
And yeah, if there's any other additional information that you want on any particular types of trucks, styles and whatnot, pictures, I like pictures too, um, let me know, cause I'd be happy to email you all the information you need.
I'd like to see like an open house or something like that where, you know, a couple of demos, we're ready to come down.
Make sure they fit in the door, if you walk around them.
Well, I mean.
Right.
Well, I think they have in the parking lot across the street, they brought a couple down last time.
But if it was, you know, four fifty and now it's four feet longer and we can't park it anywhere.
Well, I think it's really long in there, the EMS building.
The lips.
Yes, we have, we have plenty of space, so where the primary truck is parked right now, we can open up the back doors and pull the power load system completely out without hitting. Essentially what's behind it is, I think it's a drop tank for the fire department, it's kind of pulled it up and tucked, we have plenty of room in that area. Um, the other side, we currently have the Ranger parked behind the secondary truck, and that, we can't get the power load system completely out just because of the space that the Ranger takes up for sale. But we, we do have plenty of room in that building, for sure.
I guess narrow it down to a couple of options to have everyone look at, don't give them six options, two different trucks, two different prices.
Kind of both the same specs or something like that.
And I guess if we could, yeah, about the same specs, if we could do that this fall yet.
I, I can call them, yes, depends on if we're.
Or this, you know, this summer, early fall. Or this, you know, this summer, early fall.
If marketing side are able to, to give the.
Invite all the townships over, do like an open house type thing, yeah.
Well, these numbers are better than four hundred thousand.
Oh, way better, I know, as you say, I think it makes us all happier.
Okay, I will make some, I'll also see what I can, I can do, I guess, given the information that you guys have, have looked at thus far, is there anything that is attractive to you? That, any requests? As far as any particular trucks.
As cheap as it can be with as much as.
Yeah, I don't know that we need a four fifty, it's just gonna be, you know, heavier duty, rack's rougher, lost some tires.
No.
No. Well, and like she had said, that they wanted to stay with a gas, so then you have to stay with a three fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And just as long as it's what you're capable or what you need.
What serves your, serves, serves your needs, basically, you're the ones who use it now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
If it doesn't function for you and doesn't serve the public's needs and everything your needs, that is not worth it.
I, I do have experience in the CCL one fifties, uh, a service that I worked for, for four years, that's the truck that we had.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they had plenty of room, we had no issues with them, we serviced them at the local Ford dealership, then there, there were no quarrels with them whatsoever, they had great gas mileage. Um, smooth running trucks, uh, I, I will say too, the Demir's that we have is pretty awesome, I mean, it's a nice big truck, solid. It's a good truck too, so, um, yeah.
When we were driving the one fifteen, one evolved, went to weather, compared the two, the Demir's and that.
I. The Demir's, I would say handles a little bit better, just because of the fact of the weight, um, where the CCL is, is a little bit lighter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they all have a tendency to get squirrely, it all depends on road conditions and stuff, I, it's, it's like driving a sailboat on wheels, some reason. It's, it's big, it's boxy and it goes all over the place.
Worked on wheels.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have a preference with North Central versus the other place, the Premier?
Um, I, I personally don't have a preference, um, the, the couple that, uh, Premier had included, the, the Hortons, um, are kind of interesting. Uh, I tried to kinda stick with something that would be considerably close to like the Jeep XL-bon, um, that particular truck is kind of the, how do you wanna say?
Mm-hmm.
The Taj Mahal of trucks, but that's fine, and, uh, yeah, I, I tried to stay comparable to that, because there's a lot of headroom, so you're not whacking your head on anything. In the trucks in general, there's a lot of space and a lot of different safety features that they all have, um, they all kinda have a little bit of good stuff in each, each one, so.
Okay.
This all depends. I'm impartial to any of them, I just have to replace the diesel at some point in time, so, I will not complain.
Okay.
Okay, Jamie will let us know about getting a couple of them out here.
I think.
I will not touch base then with the townships, we'll get something set up, an open house, we'll do an open house.
Yep, I think that's a great idea, especially getting them involved.
Yep.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, thanks.
We're gonna have to.
Yep, we're gonna have to call it quits.
I think so.
We were gonna talk about the police department budget again, but I don't know if we have time to get into that.
Mm-hmm. For five minutes?
Yes, five minutes. Did you wanna just say something really quick about the, the police department?
You got about four minutes and thirty seconds?
Here, this is what we're gonna talk about, we had talked three versus four officers, we said we would bring it back.
Yep.
Anybody wanna say anything?
I think we should move it to another meeting.
Yeah, there's not very much time to talk.
Not doing it justice.
I agree.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, I missed your.
Hey, you look great.
Alright, then we will.
So should I make a motion to table the remaining items to our next.
Bring it back to another meeting, next workshop.
Next workshop, so I'd like to table, make a motion to table.
Yeah. Items five and six?
Items five and six to our next workshop.
Yeah. So. Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member, um, Sharpie, to table items five and six, uh, till our future workshop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn the, uh, workshop?
No.
Motion by Sharpie, second by Batchor, to adjourn the, adjourn the workshop meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried, six twenty-six.